Justice Brewer, here. Justice Carter.
Here.
Justice Grant.
Yes.
Justice Tate. Justice Todd.
Here.
Justice Zupan. Here.
Okay, we're going to turn it over to our engineer. Mr. Garnick, the discussion is in presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is the annual public hearing for the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System. Required by the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency in accordance with the village's notice of intent for the Illinois General Permit, I L R forty. This permit is performed on a five-year cycle and the next notice of intent is due by October first of 2020 for the new permit cycle beginning in 2020. The goal of this program is to eliminate pollutants from entering the storm sewer system or detention ponds and depositing into rivers, lakes, creeks, which are the ultimate outlet points. The Sauk Villages would be the Lansing drainage ditch and Deer Creek. There are six minimum required control measures, or N C Ms. First is public education and outreach. What the village has done to inform the public is, first of all, the annual report will be posted to the village's website and secondly, a pollution prevention flyer is posted on the village's website. As a reminder, do not dump oil paint or other chemicals down the sewer and clean up after your dogs in your yard and parks. The second minimum control measure is public involvement and participation. This public hearing is an example of this. The village welcomes public involvement. Call Public Works if you notice any spills in the village's streets. Sauk Village hosted a community cleanup day on April twenty-eighth, two thousand and eighteen to clean up around the village buildings and public right of way. The third minimum control measure is illicit discharge detection and elimination. The village has ordinance that it uses to address illegal discharges to village waterways. Public Works has identified all outfalls within the village. The village maintains an up-to-date sewer atlas that indicates all the outfalls. And the village's goal is to inspect twenty percent of the outfalls on an annual basis. The fourth minimum control measure is control of construction site stormwater runoff. The village has an erosion control ordinance in place to address construction site stormwater runoff. Developers are required to provide a stormwater pollution prevention plan which addresses how to prevent erosion at construction sites. Developers are required to inspect their sites weekly during construction and after rain events. The fifth minimum control measure is post-construction stormwater management. The village has post-construction ordinance in place to address long-term control of stormwater pollution from newly developed sites. Final inspections are required before the developer can leave the site. Detention is required for all developments in the village and detention ponds and other post-construction measures filter out sediments prior to the sediments being released to the environment. And the final minimum control measure is pollution prevention and good housekeeping. The village conducts street sweeping, branch pickup, and leaf collection periodically throughout the year. The village's goal is to clean twenty percent of the village's catch basins per year, prevent the collected material from reaching the village's waterways. The village requests the public's help in inspecting inlands and catch basins and keeping them clear of debris. Robs and engineering or village staff will develop a municipal operations program and stormwater management program for stormwater best management practices. So the annual activities moving forward, an annual report is made to the I E P A each year by June first. Ordances in the stormwater sewer atlas are reviewed yearly. Public Works will conduct in-house training for good housekeeping practices. Public Works will mow and remove litter from detention ponds. Public Works is participating in a watershed group organized to implement control measures that will reduce chloride contamination in the watersheds receiving streams. Robs and engineering will ensure that developments comply with stormwater ordinances and floodplain regulations. And now, Mayor, if you would, I'll call for questions from the trustees or the public.
Okay, are there any something that have any questions in regards to the presentation? Is there anyone having a question for our engineer? Okay, I know it said German, but I'll ask at this time, are there any comments or questions from the audience that they may have for the engineer at this point? Okay, I just want to say thank you very much. I see that we're trying to, we have to comply. We have this hearing so we can let the public know and put it in writing that we are complying to the pollution discharge elimination system. That's mandated by law, so. There's no other questions, I will accept the motion to adjourn. Move by trustee Todd, sorry trustee Zupan, second by trustee Carter. Any questions?
Justice Brewer?
Yes.
Justice Carter?
Yes.
Justice Grant?
Yes.
Justice Tate?
Yes.
Justice Todd?
Yes.
Justice Zupan?
Yes.
Motion is carrying. We're open to board meetings in about eight, ten minutes. Thank you.
To the flag, the United States of America and to the republic which is theirs. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor, please go to the floor.
Justice Brewer? Here. Justice Carter?
Here.
Justice Grant?
Yes.
Justice Tate? Justice Todd? Mayor? Justice Zupan? Here.
I will entertain a motion to go into executive session, personnel panel. We discuss. And also, pending litigation and collective bargaining.
Seven.
Motion by trustee Carter. Second by trustee Grant. Any questions?
Justice Brewer?
Yes.
Justice Carter?
Yes.
Justice Grant?
Yes.
Justice Tate?
Yes.
Justice Todd?
Yes.
Justice Zupan?
Yes.
Motion is carrying. Going to executive session. Accept the motion, entertain the motion to reconvene.
Motion.
Move by trustee Carter, second by trustee Grant. Mayor, please go to the floor.
Justice Brewer?
Yes.
Justice Carter?
Yes.
Justice Grant?
Yes.
Justice Tate?
Yes.
Justice Zupan?
Yes.
Justice Todd?
Todd? Yes.
Okay. Motion carrying. All right, now, next item, approval of minutes. I will entertain a motion to approve the general proceedings for the committee meeting of December fourth, two thousand and eighteen.
I second.
It was moved by trustee Zupan, second by trustee Carter. Any questions?
Justice Carter?
Yes.
Justice Grant?
Yes.
Justice Tate? Justice Todd?
Yes.
Justice Zupan?
Yes.
Justice Brewer?
Yes.
Motion is carrying. I will entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes for the regular board meeting of January eighth, two thousand and nineteen.
I motion.
I would move that we remove those from the agenda.
All right, next item, public comment. All questions and comments must be directed to the mayor. Each speaker may comment on any matter pertaining to the business of Sauk Village. Each speaker is allowed one opportunity to speak for up to three minutes. They may not engage in debate comments or comments, replies to the mail. And I will answer all questions at the end of the question here. Please state your name when you come up. Just a second, hold on just a second.
The court board, I come before you tonight not for body or anything like that. Did they say, some have told me that I need to come and speak with you tonight? Not as somebody kind of tell you what to do or how to do it. But I think that me have got to the place where he's sending me on a mission to change things. And the thing is that we've got to learn to respect each other. I don't have to agree with you, you don't have to agree with me. But I say when there's a question to ask of the mayor or whoever's asking you, if you don't want to answer it, just tell them I give back to you. Same thing apply to the audience. When you get here to the mic, come here for business and ask a question. You know, fellas, I've been real sick. From that, I learned how long we would be, I don't know. But he told me to come and tell you, said it's up to you to use. You don't have to hate each other, you don't have to argue with each other, none of that stuff is important. What's important is speak what you think has to be done, whether it comes from me or whether it's come from a three-year-old child. Learn to respect. That's where I'm from, and that's what I had to tell you last year. So you can say that you want to listen to it, but you don't. But just listen to what I'm telling you right now. That we all don't know how long, because I didn't know, but I was real sick. And from that point, I learned very quickly that nobody's promised nothing. So I say to you, thank you, Mayor, thank you, board, thank you very much for listening to me. Thank you very much.
Judy Gass here. I'm going to try to rush this because I have a lot to say. I was here, meeting before last, I was not here last meeting. And I brought to the attention that I was at a police pension meeting. While there, I was able to ask a question. And I asked if the police negotiations were still going on. The president of the pension board told me, yes, but we haven't had a meeting in over two months. So I brought it to this board and asked the question, why are we paying H R for meetings that don't exist? Because she's continually on the payroll as she is tonight. Nobody up there said anything, nobody asked a question. None of our fluent financiers, you might say, had anything to say about it. And before the meeting was over, they voted to pass accounts payable payment without a question. No meetings, she's getting paid, but don't ask any questions. I don't understand that. And this is why people get the name Bob O'Donnell. I also, Joe Wazawati has an assistant. The financial director had two part-time, one full-time people working with her with the finance department. Everybody's got people coming in. Oh, it's in the budget. Well, I don't believe it. And I want to know why, if we have police officers in the budget, we haven't got our police officers. Our crime rate is up high. The shootings are high. There were fourteen shooters in less than a week. There was gunshot right next door to me, shot out the man's picture window, got close to his wife's head while she was watching the news on T V. Like, we don't need any more cars on the road? Obviously, you don't have scanner and listen to the running around that these guys have to do and the overtime they have to put in. And yet, you don't want to help the police department? I think it's a disgrace. You're spending money on things that are not needed, assistance that aren't going to be doing anything. And if the financial director isn't here, what are the people in the finance office going to do now? Who's going to tell them what to do? Matt Couch. I spoke with our chief of police last at the safety meeting and we brought up some issues that were concerning to all of our residents. I'm sure one of those issues we mentioned was body cameras for our police officers. We don't have the money, I'm sure, but there are ways to get that money if we work hard and diligently together to figure out what we need to do to get those body cameras for either the officers and/or their cars. These men are put in a position every day out there on that street. They don't know when the next kid is going to have a gun when they try to reprimand these kids or catch these kids that are running rampant. When they run after these kids and run and jump the fences, they have nothing but their bodies to protect. Now, I know they wear a body or a vest, but that may not protect them as they need to. Then, if they do catch these kids and they go to court, they have nothing to back them up to say, this kid had a gun, this kid had a knife, or whatever the case might be, or it's an adult. Why don't we figure out a way to do something to help these police officers get those body cameras as a collective group to come together to help these men that are helping us by protecting us out there on that street? Another issue, I believe Mr. Mayor said a few weeks back that all our officers were paid in full. I think that I have to differ with that, I did hear some grumblings. That has not been the case, that's one thing. I did see on the accounts payable that uniform allowances were paid. I'd like to know if that makes everybody current with their allowances for our police department? And the dog is still there. The chief did get his little treats to try to calm that dog down, which I hope we don't have to go through that. Another question that I have on my mind is, we don't see our fire chief here. Now, I know he said he was going to retire at fifty years. We haven't seen him in a long time. Is that fifty years up? Are we going to see our fire chief back? Because he doesn't seem to participate in our meetings anymore. And I'm just curious when we're going to see him back. Thank you.
Rachel Eastman. I wanted to, just again, two or three weeks ago, I had requested for you to answer possibly why we were having an assistant for the, for Joe Wazawati. He's already getting paid a certain amount that people disagree with and now we're showing him twenty-five thousand dollars more for an assistant. I just want to know possibly what that assistant will be doing to help and how that's benefiting our village with that twenty-five thousand that we could potentially possibly have a police officer or a fire agent. And then, so I just want to know if they have the correct education for that as well and if there's any requirements, like minimum requirement of an education for an assistant position of that sort. And then, I would like to know if we were going to have anything going on because I'm believing that the community center hasn't been running. So, well, the last two weeks, I don't know if that's due to weather or if that's, if there's no improvement. So I would like to know that and that would be all. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. Debbie Williams. I just wanted, first of all, I'm going to Chief White and trustee Zupan. I had to get an interview and I have a bit about Chief White's vision of how he plans to move forward. You know, public safety is very important to the community. We had a lot of issues recently. So I have turned in my letter of interest to trustee Zupan to join the public safety committee. So hopefully, we can work together and see what we can do collectively to try and help with the situation. I just wanted to say again that not receiving information from this administration is what causes the misinformation and the speculation that a lot of people have to deal with. I have asked for the accounts payable for two thousand and seventeen, eighteen since August. I have yet to receive them. I did put a FOIA in yesterday, hopefully I'll receive those. I asked for a copy of the vacant homes list and I was told that that's confidential. But it's never been confidential in the past. And I asked the attorney general's office if that's something that's normally confidential and they told me no. They said, go ahead and FOIA it and if you don't get it, then you can appeal the decision based on why they say it's confidential. That's never been anything that's been confidential before. I think that we can work together to get things accomplished if we're willing to share ideas and communicate with each other. If there's one thing that any of us should have learned after the last ten years of attending these board meetings, that not working together is the problem. We have to work together and we have to respect each other and we have to share information. Because I don't want to share, I don't want information shared to me that's incorrect. And when I come to the village board meetings or I ask a mayor or clerk or a board member for information and I get misinformation, I'm going to share that information with someone else. If I don't get any information, then I can only speculate what I think to be true. So what I'm saying and what I'm asking is, can we be just a little bit more open and transparent with each other? And can we be more willing to work to each other? I am willing. I'm willing to work with anybody. I'm just joining two committees that I'm happy to be a part of and I'm hoping after April or May, we can all work together again, regardless of who's elected. We need to work together as a community. This is a fabulous community, but we've kind of lost sight of what's important. Thank you.
Okay, we start off with the comment that was given by one of the residents. I appreciate that, yes, we should respect one another. Sometimes that does happen. Sad to say, but I don't even know how to explain that part when that does happen. The negotiations, I can tell you this, are still going on. There's a lot of issues in that. And the board was told about it today in the executive session. There's a lot of issues that are going on with negotiation. You just don't negotiate this, okay, that's it, we take care of it. There's a lot of different aspects to negotiating that you don't see upfront. There's a lot of behind-the-scenes things that have to be taken care of to get to certain points. Just because they will have a meeting doesn't mean that work is not being done. As far as personnel, some questions, again, I do not answer personnel questions. Person that mentioned that there's fourteen shootings, I'm sure the chief is sitting right here. I wasn't aware of fourteen shootings in a week, but like I say, you know, that's, if you say that's what it was, doesn't necessarily mean that's what it was. But I didn't care if fourteen shootings, and I'm sure the chief is sitting here, so I'm sure he'll, you know, address that at a later date. I don't attempt to try to micromanage any one person to find out why, but I will tell you this, as I said before, officers cannot stop shooting. People can't stop shooting. The person that's shooting has to stop shooting. If you got it in your mind that's what you want to do, who would know what that's going to do, what's going to happen until that happens? I'm hoping that the person that's, that the people that are doing this will get into their mind that what is it going to accomplish by killing another human being? If you got it set in your mind to kill another human being, that's what you have set in your minds for people to do. A police officer standing in front of someone is not going to stop that person if they have it in their mind they want to shoot a person. So by saying that we need more police officers to stop shooting, only thing that the police officers will do is deter. That's what they're therefore deterred. Can you stop a shooting? No. Chicago has a whole lot more police officers, they have a whole lot more people, but their racial, the police officers are a lot different than ours and they still can't stop the shooting. So I'm just, you know, I, I'm trying to, and I've given the chief, we've talked about different things to help the officers that are there, it's more than just what's said. And I have utmost confidence in this chief that he came in boots on the ground, running and trying to make this department a mild department in the South suburbs. Yes, there's a few things that have to be done. If it was not perfect, if it was perfect, then we wouldn't have to have this problem. But yes, there are some things, but he's addressing those items, those issues. As far as body cameras, we talked about that. No, I didn't bring it out to the board because I still, we're still talking about the cost and what we need to do with body cameras and vehicle cameras. Well, it's not just, okay, we go out there and buy this. We have to have a lot of different other aspects in place in order to get body cameras. You just can't go out there and get them and then, you know, you have to have storage. There's a lot of different things involved in just purchasing a body camera or a dash camera. I, this next one, as far as got paid, I said it before. I don't know, somebody's probably telling you that they didn't get paid. I don't know about you. If I didn't get my check, I would definitely be at whatever place the next day and find out why I didn't get my check. Now, you're saying that this person didn't get paid or whatever, obviously, that has an average of average to take anybody coming and say, well, I didn't get my check. So every officer, every person that works in the village got paid. There's people that work in the village that sit there right there. They all got paid. If they didn't get paid, the league didn't do the bill about it. So I don't know what someone is saying, then again, I can't stop here saying, I cannot stop what's going on other than what I can come out of my mouth. I can't stop somebody else saying something. But I do know that the, everybody has been paid. Uniform allowances is ongoing. Will that bring us up to date? It will bring us up to date as far as for those officers. Uniform allowances are paid on anniversary. So anniversaries are different times during the year for each officer. So it's not a matter that we paid up, I mean, everybody that's doing uniform allowances has gotten paid for that. That's what you see on the accounts payable. That's what you see on the accounts paper. I do have a person here for the fire chief. You have a representative. If you've got some questions, I'm probably asking if you have questions. Fire chief's representative that's here, Captain Sinnerway. So it's not a matter of if he's going to come or what, if he's out, if he happens to be off that day, I mean, everyone takes that time off. I don't know who put a job in, anyone had that never took the day off, but they do take time off, so if he's not here, then he must have took some time off. Again, I don't talk about personnel, even though if you try to push me into personnel or what position, and education and all that, I don't discuss personnel matters in open board meetings. I've said that many times. Receiving information, I try to inform the board, I'm sorry, the residents, and my office always, I'm always here. I mean, I'm not here a hundred percent, I'm here at least ninety percent of the time. And if I'm not here, then it's already documented I had to go to a meeting or whatever, but I'm here. So if you're saying that you're not getting information, I don't know who you're asking who's telling you that, but I'm here. Even after the board meeting, I'm still here. If there's something that you have, that you're not, that you weren't clear on, I'm right here. Let's go over, let's find out. I've even invited people to my office after that, because they wanted more detail, and just put time on the side for that person to come, and it never happened. So, you know, I'm here and available. I'm going to check into this vacant list. I don't know about as far as the galavants against that or with that, because there is something about personal position that the village cannot evolve. So I have to check instead, make sure that we're not violating anything, as far as giving someone an address for non-payment or whatever the case may be, so I have to see that. But as far as being open and transparent, that's all we try to do. I know that, you know, you may not be what you want to hear, but it is what it is. I'm going to tell the truth. I'm going to answer the question. Yes, I will not ask a personnel question. I will not go into personnel items. Personal business is what it is, it's personal business. So whether a person is this or that or whatever, it's not for me to say. I'm not going to, I'm not going to deal with that part of it. That being said, move on to the reports of officers. Okay, today, I do have my State of the Village address that I will convey to each and every one of you. Before I do that, I will let you, I can tell everyone tomorrow, we're having a business after hour for all of our businesses that are here in the villages, in the village, and our vendors that come in and do business in the village. And so if you want to come out and meet some of the people, some of the owners of these different businesses, industrial, commercial, or retail, hopefully, we'll get most of them here at the senior center, starting at fourth floor, in the bid lighting freshman. Just going to come out and listen, and talk to the different businesses, and let them know, if you have some concern, if you feel that the business is not conducive the way that you feel, talk to them. Let them know how you feel about it. Let them know that this is what you would like to see or whatever. They won't know that unless someone tells them that. With that being said, good evening, and thank you all for attending and coming out tonight. As I said before, I am very humbled and proud to serve you as mayor, and to present to you my second State of the Village address. Not even cold weather could shut down the progress that we have made here in the last twenty-one months. Since we met last year, we have made significant progress on getting our village back on track. I attribute that success to the hard-working, dedicated staff that we depended on to provide professionalism and drive to serve our residents and our community. Thank you to our staff, village treasurer Anthony Fench, director of economic development, Joseph Witherwady, director of public works, Kevin Weller, police chief Malcolm White, fire chief Alice Starfright, director of BMA, Alan Vabrick, administrative assistant, Mary Klopp, and HR consultant Dr. Alicia Strong. I also wanted to thank those trustees who support our strategic plan for progress and helping to assure that we move forward on the pathway to progress. A special thank you to all of our employees who are on the front line providing the services to our residents each and every day. They recognize the critical needs of our residents. I want to say thank you to all those from voluntary and many capacities in our village. You are all an important link between our residents, businesses, and village board. I would not be here today without giving thanks to my biggest supporter, my wife, Wendy Burris. You have been my rock. Finally, I want to thank God for all of his blessings upon our community. This year's address will include our plans for 2019, while highlighting our successes since 2017. This year, we are staying focused on our pathway to progress with Salt Village. A new start for 2019 with a renewed commitment to approaching our goals with more energy and drive for the future of our community and focus on success. Continued accountability, continued balanced budget, greater security for our residents, and expansion of youth services. I am proud to say that the state of our village is stronger than before. We faced many challenges in 2018 as we began the year with much enthusiasm and confidence. They were brave about the change, that we were committed to where we began our journey in 2017. Many tried to resist the change. Change was mandated by the people of Salt Village in the 2017 election. We continue to bring about that change in 2018 as the status quo was not going to continue. The residents want us to get our village on a pathway to progress, and in 2018, we made significant changes in both personnel and the way that we were doing business day to day. I reported last year that when I took office in May of 2017, that the village had been in financial chaos. I'm pleased to report that the financial chaos is over. Today, I'm happy to report that we are able to, one, adopt responsible financial policies and procedures; two, adopt a balanced and reasonable budget with realistic projections; three, reduce our overhaul, our overall deficit by $2 million; number four, establish the village's first-ever reserve fund; number five, stop regularly taking money out of the waterfront; number six, implement an automatic payroll service; number seven, reduce our overall financial risk; number eight, approve a bond issue to save us $160,000 in interest; number nine, a bond issue that will provide $2 million for infrastructure improvements; number 10, reduce our legal bills by $400,000 per year; number eleven, reduce our legal exposure by sound HR practices. I am pleased to report to you that the village is now able to issue bonds once again because we ended the financial chaos. I am pleased to report we eliminated the status quo. Our agent report, which routinely exceeded $1 million during prior administration, has been virtually eliminated. We lowered our property taxes by 21.9%, which will reduce property taxes for residents and businesses. Finances are not, have not only been our only success, we have made big strides in economic development since 2017. I am pleased to report to the residents, businesses, and to the village board, in 2018, we closed on the sale of thirty-two acres of land the village owned for fourteen years. We sold this property and made $1.35 million. Not only were we able to sell this property, but we negotiated with the buyer to bring in private investment of some $10 million. I want to thank Lynn McEmery for bringing gas and water to Salt Village, a great addition to our community that will bring in over $500,000 in revenue to the village each year, that will provide our residents with a gas station, car wash, restaurant, and about eighty new jobs. Salt Village has not had such a commercial development since 1998. Look for a grand opening celebration as we see gas in our village's business this spring. Economic development has been a key component to our strategic plan, I'm sorry, our strategic plan for progress, and reiterates our commitment to our comprehensive plan. We have secured a $350,000 grant for Phase One Engineering in our logistics center. The study is critical for the expansion of our industrial park, which will bring Salt Village new businesses and opportunities. This study will get underway in 2019 and will be completed by 2020. Ladies and gentlemen, this is progress. These have been major steps in our journey on our pathway to progress, so we will focus on the continued progress in 2019. We will focus on a balanced budget in the coming fiscal year. Crime is everywhere, and Salt Village is not exempt. With our new budget, I plan on bringing on additional police officers to increase our police presence and provide better security for our residents and businesses. I have asked our departments to continue to do more with less and work smarter, not harder, give the residents value for their dollar. We will continue to negotiate fair contracts with our employees, both fair to the taxpayers and fair to our employees. We cannot irresponsibly sacrifice our future by squandering a one-time cash infusion by making commitments we cannot keep lending, leading us back to financial chaos. We will continue to focus our effort on cleaning up Salt Village. Dead trees will be removed throughout the village as we continue our efforts to remove ice sores along the parkways. I'm pleased to report that we will continue our grass mowing efforts on vacant homes this summer. Last year, we were able to mow 178 vacant homes. We do not just want to mow vacant homes, but we want to fill these vacant homes with homeowners. That is why we will continue working with the South Suburban Land Bank and Cook County Land Bank, as well as private investors, to get these homes back on the track. Some of these homes, which are deteriorated, are in for the queue for demolition and will be taken down. I'm pleased to report we have applied for an additional $75,000 grant to assist us with the demolition of these homes in 2019. Last year, we received $75,000, and hopefully can continue that progress this year. We have reintroduced home inspections last year and will continue that effort in 2019. Raising our standards is critical to getting our village back on track, raising property values, and ensuring safe homes for our residents. We will reexamine our standing committee for the village board in May of this year. I want to thank those trustees who have accepted the challenge in 2018, and who have provided us with guidance and input in these respective assignments. These may not be committee meetings, I'm sorry, they may not be committee meetings, but they provide invaluable counsel in the road which they were entrusted. Thank you to trustee Cecil Tate, who has been helpful and instrumental in securing a grant which was, which has allowed us to maintain 178 properties in 2018 and for 2019. Trustee Tate will complete his term as village trustee at May, but will not complete his commitment to serve. Trustee Roger Grant, who has worked with getting our village finances back on track, and also worked to get our financial procedures and policies completed and approved by the village board. Trustee Grant will continue his role as chairman of the village budget and finance committee, and has done an outstanding job. Trustee Beth Zupan, who has worked with police, fire, and BMA as well, has worked to get our village newspaper back on running. She is also working on the village's new website as well, in addition to getting a community policing initiative begun with the new chief of police. Trustee Zupan will continue to work on improving communications with our residents and businesses, which was a key component in our strategic plan for progress. Trustee Ronald Carter, who has been helpful in providing guidance on community outreach and community events. Trustee Carter was appointed in 2018 and brings a level of professionalism to the village board that we can truly appreciate. Trustee Carter will focus on implementing youth programs and will work on community events in 2019. Trustee Linda Todd, who has worked on reviewing the village ordinances referred to her and her committee. Trustee Todd has done a great job on getting ordinances reviewed and back to the village board for approval in a timely manner. Again, I want to thank those trustees who believe in getting our village on a pathway to progress, who have been supportive of the initiative of this administration and our strategic plan for progress. In 2018, we began a new comprehensive plan. This process has been long and required input from the community. Our consultant on this project has hosted numerous meetings, community events, and town hall meetings, and in 2019, we will complete this plan and begin implementation of this plan. Being recognized and identified by agencies such as Cook County, South Suburban Mayor's and Managers, as communities, as a community that is truly working hard to turn our village around, truly shows the progress we have made. I am pleased to report that Salt Village has also been selected by CBAP, the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning, to host a staff employee for the next two years. Our new plan, among other things, assists us for documentation of our goals and objectives of our comprehensive plan, and assists with identifying funding sources for which we can tap into other projects as well. The goal of the position is to leave a lasting legacy in place for future staff to carry on. The best part about the new plan is that it will not cost the taxpayers of Salt Village a dime. This is funded for the next two years through CBAP. Many things we have been working on would not be possible without grant funding. I will be remiss if I did not identify all the grants that we have been working through and toward over the course of the last couple of years. $560,000 federal grant in 2017, which allowed us to complete long overdue roadwork and sidewalk, including the 2023rd Street and Cornell Avenue. $75,000 investment Cook Grant in Cook, grant 2017, which assisted on the same project. $135,000 with local technical assistance grant, which allowed us to begin our new comprehensive plan, which will be completed in 2019. $75,000 grant from the Illinois Housing Department Authority, which will allow us, which allowed us to mow vacant and abandoned homes in 2018 and this year as well. $100,000 in preliminary engineering assistance from Cook County, which allowed us to apply for and receive a $350,000 invested grant in 2018 for our logistics center, Phase One Engineering Study. $200,000 in CDPG street maintenance grant funding, which will allow us to repair streets in 2019. $150,000 in staff support from CBAP to fund a two-year salary for the plan that will be with our village. Eight hundred, I'm sorry, $8,430 police camera grant, which is a police camera grant, which is underway, and $2,400 for replacement bulletproof desks. Last month, we applied for an additional $75,000 from the Illinois Housing Development Authority to assist with housing demolition. That is some $1.7 million in grants and other assistance that we have received utilized or we're working towards just in the last nineteen months. We continue to face many challenges in 2018 and 2019 and beyond, and we will go into an election, as we go into an election cycle. I hope we can set aside politics and work toward what is going well for our community. We will focus on truly, on what truly matters in 2019. Salt Village has already begun to make big strides on the pathway to progress. I am confident that with the continued support of the residents of Salt Village, we will continue to achieve great things. I thank you for coming out tonight, and God bless, and God bless our village. Okay, next, report, village clerk, Ellen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And that was very impressive, State of the Village, Pathway to Progress, report that you just provided, and you shared with us some wonderful information in terms of... in terms of the accomplishments of you and your administration. You also highlighted specific individuals. Uh, but one thing that I noticed that was not there, and it's concerning, because it was part of my report for tonight anyway, and that is you didn't speak to justice and equity within the village, within the people who walk these halls on a daily basis. Because I do feel that where I'm concerned, I see a lot of injustice, and I know that this administration is not very positive where I'm concerned, because I feel a great deal of hostility frequently when I walk in here. But that's not for you to handle at this point, because it wasn't even worth, the village clerk office was not even worth mentioning in all of this, what? Fourteen-page document that you provided. But let me just move on, because I would like to address the trustees at this point. Trustees, I have asked, I have researched, and I've given you the information in terms of other villages in our area that have deputy clerks. I have jumped up and down for everything that I've asked for. I've given you all of the, uh, research, I've given you the data, not just where Deputy Clerk was concerned, but other areas as well. And to me, you have failed this office, because likewise, the mayor has not been supportive of the village clerk's office, you've not been either. The only thing that you've done was you create a little more work as you ask me to jump through some hoops for some items that I asked for that has not been forthcoming. And please believe me, that it's not because we just hired another assistant that I'm back on this tirade. I have been asking for assistance to assist, to assist me. I've even asked for volunteers, when volunteers come in, they've been treated very badly. They do not come back anymore, because they're not, uh, made to feel welcome. You leave me out here all alone, except I am very thankful that just today, trustee Zupan did offer to assist me with some of the minutes so that I can just get up to speed a little bit more and make certain that I get out our executive board meeting, meeting then. So I do appreciate you for that, trustee Zupan. But I am still in the market for someone to assist me. Someone, anybody that can come in and give me an hour or two hours, once or twice a week, bow something for me. You should see my office. But let me move on and talk about some of the other things that the village clerk's office is responsible for to make certain that the village runs, even though it's not in this report. And that is, it is now time to, uh, order vehicle health. Did you drop it? No. I mean, seriously, this disturbs me. You listed every department head, every trustee in this report, and the village clerk's offices, that's ugly, Mayor, that's very ugly. But anyway, let me move on. It is time for the vehicle stickers, and I spoke with the person saying, you know that I ordered, um, we still have, at this late stage, we still have about three hundred stickers that have not been purchased. So we're lacking there in terms of the code, enforcing the code, enforcing vehicle stickers. Now, animal tags is even worse. We lowered the number of animal tags to two hundred last year, from five hundred in the previous years. We still have more than a hundred and fifty animal tags. I've only lowered to two hundred. I have two dogs by myself. So that means our residents are not purchasing these animal tags. And I know that I've mentioned it before, that it's something that we really need to focus on enforcing. Otherwise, let's do away with it. But it is a revenue source. But I'm buying my, my animals, but so many others aren't buying, and we're not enforcing it, but we're spending money to buy the tags? Something's a little bit askew, and I think that it's a piece that we're going to have to really look at. Let's talk about records right now, because one of the things that most of you all think that the village clerk, the only thing the village clerk do is take notes and keep records. Well, I'm not doing a very good job with the minutes, and that's posted all over every place, and so we acknowledge that. And I'm not doing very well with record keeping either. And let me share with you why I'm not doing well with record keeping. I'm not doing well with records keeping, because I don't get the records. I don't get records to file, I don't get records to secure. So you know, as we talk about the village not being in compliance in some areas, then if you're so concerned, let's work on getting the village in compliance in all areas. The village clerk's office is the depository for all of the records of the village. I don't get them. And then if I got them, no, really, I wouldn't have any place to put them, because the office is so small. But it's still statute, so I'm just going to say, let's follow statute. Now, I have a couple of announcements, if you're willing to listen. And that one, we're going to have a dinner dance. You know, we talk about our youth needing things to do. We're going to have a dinner dance for our youth who are in seventh and eighth grade, not just students from, no, uh, from Rickover. They will be any of the students that live in the village who are seven or eighth grade. And guess what, people, they have to get dressed enough to come. This is going to be one of those days where we are looking for having some youngsters who are very polished, on very good behavior, and, uh, I'm really excited to be planning that. Couple other things I want to pull, to bring to your attention, and, uh, that's a candidate forums. Saw Village's candidate forum, and that is only for candidates that's running in Saw Village for trustee and school board, that is going to take place March the sixteenth. We have secured the League of Women Voters to moderate that for us, because those people, they're from our force, and they're the ones who basically moderate and plan all of the other ones in the South Suburbs. So we're very fortunate that they'll be able to do ours as well. But that's not the only opportunity that candidates will have and residents will have to hear from our candidates. Because Bloom Township Democratic Organization has planned two such forums as well. For school board members, that's going to be February the twenty-seventh. For trustees, that will be March the thirteenth. It's during the time that their regular meeting is. A couple weeks ago, we talked about the open lands grant, which would provide trees. That didn't get in here either, you know, too, because I did it, yes. But anyway, we're having a meeting on the fourteenth, and we have a very good grant writer who is planning to be here with us. Uh, and us, me, Kevin Weller, and myself, and if someone else would like to join, give your input, we are meeting on the fourteenth at two o'clock, right here, where we look at, how many trees do we really want? How many do we think that we can get this year and get planted? And how many supporters that we think that we will be able to have and get? And then where we would go from there. Mr. Mayor and trustees, that concludes my report.
Village engineer, Mr. Jim Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. We have completed the design of the I-394 water main crossing replacement project. All that remains are the final stages of our quality control, quality assurance phase of the project, which involved review of contract documents by village staff and final technical reviews. Once the comments generated by these reviews have been addressed, the project will be ready to bid in March. You know, the tank riser replacement project can also be agreed bid in March. And that concludes my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Fire department chief, I'm sorry, Captain Dennis Sutter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the three-week period from January seventeenth through February seventh, fire department responded to forty calls for service. There were no major incidents, most were flawed detectives, uh, and ambulance assistance. Fire department had personnel at the station twenty-four-seven for the period January twenty-eighth through February first for the polar vortex. This allowed the station to be used as a warning site, the residents needed a place to build. Fortunately, it was not needed. Please continue to check any neighbors to ensure their safety. We welcomed back another member to our department, named Cameron Luther. Cameron's two brothers and a sister are also members, as well as his dad. His grandfather, Zeke Luther, is retired assistant chief of our department. This concludes my report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Police department chief, Falcon White.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and village board. For the period between January twenty-third and February twelfth, the police department received or answered, uh, three hundred and ninety-five calls for service. Uh, during that same time period, uh, our department also made nine arrests. That concludes my report for now.
Thank you.
As soon as we go back, uh, one, I forgot to ask a question. To Robinson Engineering, you, you indicated that, uh, the design for the I-394 water main crossing replacement project is going to be went up, uh, going to be completed by, what they, did you say?
I said that it would be bid in March.
Bid in March? Okay, do, do we have any idea how much the bid would be? You know, participate, how much we need this one?
Uh, the cost of this project, I believe, is, um, one hundred and fifty thousand, somewhere in that range.
Okay, one hundred and fifty thousand, and this, this, uh, this I-394 water main, this is going to go under, uh, the expressway over to Lenny Car Wash and over to the, or is over to the, uh, Laundromat, or where is it from the, where?
Two hundred and twenty-third, two across the expressway.
Okay.
To the Slade Point Industrial Park.
To Slade Point. Okay, thank you.
Emergency management agency director, Alan Maverick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and board. Uh, from the time of January twenty-second to February twelfth, EMA responded to fourteen calls of service, uh, relatively, relatively to the calls that the fire department, uh, spoke of. Also too, um, as you can hear outside, we're under a wind advisory until three A.M. in the morning, with winds up to thirty, thirty miles to forty miles an hour. Also too, on, uh, March fourth, uh, Saw Village EMA will be attending a pipeline safety program sponsored by Core, held in Elsip, Illinois, which is no cost for the class to the village. And March fourteenth, uh, we're going to have our monthly smart meeting that'll be in Crete, Illinois. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. And then development director, Joseph Kugelwatt.
Thank you, Mr. Herr. Uh, I have a report, uh, prepared for this evening. However, um, a staff person, assistant that did start this last week, um, she's doing a fantastic job. Uh, the staff person was hired to replace a staff member that resigned, uh, previous year. Um, so it's not a new position, this is a, a position that we filled. Some of you have already met the new individual. Um, those of you who have not, please, uh, feel free to introduce yourself to the board. That's all I have.
Thank you. Report to trustees, standing committees, and committees. Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I interrupted. I think we have a report from, uh, department head Weller, if somebody wants to read it.
What happened? Yeah, I think, I think I need to get that.
Yeah, sure, I'd like a copy. It was in my inbox, so it might be that it's in everybody else's inbox, too. But if not, I made a copy. Sure. Um, so if I may, just read, um, from Mr. Weller. He said, uh, "The water main break in the field behind Rickover School was completed. The second one at seventeen seventy-one, two hundred and twenty-third place, they found the leak at the hydrant, they're ordering parts, and repair both the back hose at the second dig, both are working." Second item, staff had several snow events, some needing salt only, others needing plowing the asphalt to complete. Each storm is tracked to determine the need, the temperature is the final deciding factor. Item three, the staff had several trucks break down during those snow events from hopper motor number six, hydraulic hoses, electric work, and plowing issues on, um, another item. Uh, item number four, they have a small job being completed at the hall here. Police department, fire department, public works as well, like plumbing, lights, heaters, new requests and cleanup. And he promises the Christmas tree will be taken down as soon as the lift truck is repaired, because we're all bugging him about that. I promise you, we are. Uh, next, he reports that the staff is probing two more streetlights. One is located at the corner of two hundred and seventeenth Street and Merrill. The arm and the light head, uh, are damaged from the windstorm. The second one is located at two hundred and fifteenth Place and Jeffrey. The light was shot out and needed a new head. The lift truck again is being worked on, and as soon as that one is repaired, it should be back in two weeks. And then, uh, both for the fire department and public works, um, explorers were ordered and are ready. And that concludes his report.
Thank you. Uh, next item is a report from trustees, standing committees, and committees. Public service committee trustee Bernice Brewer.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, your state of, uh, top villages, uh, shows a lot of great accomplishments, um, in the village, and, um, I, uh, beg to differ with some of the things we pass that down to the top. Uh, since Mohan has left, we have no idea who's managing our finances. Uh, since the abrupt departure of Sopen, there is questions to be asked. We don't have the ability to get any reports, and this is before Sopen left. And there's no transparency. I understand that you have all these great figures that you've come up with, but, uh, unless we have some reports to, um, to statuate, you know, what you're saying, you know, there, people are going to be skeptics about what, uh, you talk about all these accomplishments, great accomplishments we have. Um, what I'm going to do is that, how can you speak on, this is rhetorical present, speak on all the accomplishments, but we as trustees haven't got any reports or anything? Now, uh, what I've just passed out to you is a, uh, more comprehensive, uh, report on the, uh, request for proposal. It has a little bit more meat into it, and I, it's going to be on the next week's agenda on the nineteenth, and I would love for the trustees to come out and ask questions and talk about what's going on. Now, for years, Saw Village officials have improperly shipped, was, has been, struck, improperly shipped and watered and taxed monies to the general fund to pay multi-million dollar short clauses. Although accounting firms have conducted annual audits for years, Saw Village officials have acknowledged that the fund transfers have been standard practice and as well, created a pit of massive debt out of which we cannot dig ourselves out of. Saw Village has been living the honest meaning for, for quite some time. The time has come to seriously address the financial chaos that has become the norm. I propose that a request for proposal be drafted, approved, and implemented as a means to find out just where the money is. The purpose of the financial forensic audit is to assure that Saw Village record keeping follows general acceptable accounting principles and a true fund balance. The IRP specifies financial, in the financial forensic audit, will address the compilation of financial data that can be used to determine reliability, accuracy, and the strength of internal audits regarding Saw Village finances. We ask that the financial audit may or may not uncover intentional fraud or misrepresentation of fact. The purpose of this- The purpose of this audit is to imply, is not to imply or accuse anybody of any wrongdoing, but rather create a truth to justify revenue and expenditures related to our South Village finances. In an effort to address financial sources, the trustees should know where the money is. We have no idea where the money is. We are not getting any reports. Secondly, we want to know what has the money been used on? We can't get a detailed letter to tell you anything about what's going on in the water fund, state finances. I know where the bottom line, everybody knows where the bottom line, but how do we get to the bottom line? We don't know because we don't get any reports. And we also like to know, where's the money? Where is the money at right now? You know, what are we going to do so we won't have to borrow any more money? This is no means by a comprehensive plan, this is a template just for talking point so we could find out what's really going on in the village right now. Because for some reason, you indicated that we're doing a fine job. We might be, I don't know. We don't get any reports to let us know. We can't get anything because Sutcliffe's not here, Mohan is left, you know, so these things that you need to make an informed decision. You cannot make an informed decision if you don't have any supporting documents. That's the bottom line. And I ask for a resolution to be drafted by the attorney. I see a specific amount, amount from forty-five to a hundred thousand dollars, that's the target that I use and have supporting documents for. But this resolution should be a win-win for everybody. You know, residents are asking where's the money? We can't tell them where the money is because we don't get any reports to tell me where the money is. So with that being said, the ultimate goal here is to ramble the financial puzzle efficiently and address those deficiencies so we can move forward. We're all working and helping with each other, but we can't make an honest decision because we don't have any reports. And that's in my report.
Good question that you asked, where...
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, there's no debate for both of us in there?
I didn't vote for the debate. I didn't ask for the debate. I'm not debating you. I'm just making a statement. That's okay with you. You've asked for the last two years since you've been the trustee, you've FOIA'd, I don't know how much, asked what's going on. That card over there represents maybe a third of the reports that you asked for that you have not picked up. And they were in my, been in my office and they've been in the other FOIA clerk's office that you would, that you had asked for different reports, different finances. That represents maybe a third of how much you asked for. And to say that it hasn't been given to you, we're not going to deliver it to you. You want to come into the, Matt, I can take what you say. If you want to come in to, but this was available to the trustee from day one. But from that, but to say that it was never available, I beg to differ, but I'm not going to sit back and argue back and forth. But that right there shows just what it is and that's just a third, a third of the request that's been going into FOIA each and every week for the last year and eight months. So to say that, 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 that it was not given is ludicrous, but we'll move on. Budget and finance, trustee, budget and finance.
So I have to debate for yours.
But this is not, we said we had to debate. Trustee, I made a statement and we're moving on.
So, and I want to, I want to talk about what's going on there.
Hold this, hold this hostage now to listen to what you're going to go back and...
You, you may be hostage, I listened to what you were saying.
You don't have to listen, but we're going to move on to new business.
Because I know what you're just saying is not true. You guys just fool themselves.
We're not going to go back, got to do this.
Everybody was asking for information that I got.
Trustee Roger Grant.
And I've been sitting here, everybody's asking for information, you haven't been giving me any reports. Now, I'm sitting here coming with great big old spot of reports. You know you've been pulling that stuff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You probably...
I'm sitting here trying to hold this place, these plates hostage.
Well, then you call it, be quiet and just stop telling me all this stuff. Yeah, yeah, that's right. Yeah, you want to tell me, you want to move on.
But you, but you're supposed to be, go ahead, trusty.
Yeah, you're supposed to be professional, you know, you're trying to diss me. Come on, we all can do that.
Trustee, this is what you keep talking to me, right? Please.
It doesn't mean that you're right either, Mr. Mayor. It doesn't mean that you're right either, okay? I've been asking for information without FOIA for the longest, and you haven't, and, and, oh, I got it now. No one has been for all of that. Okay. You sit up there holding any offers and I have asked them, every week I come in and ask you for stuff, you say, oh, you know, you pick it up in my office and you put it in my desk.
No, you do not. You say, you say that you're not coming to my office.
We can go back in a minute and we can go back and listen to the tapes and everybody up here knows that I've been asking for documents and you said the documents are in your office. I am not going to your office and getting any press. That's what I'm here about.
You try to, I just figured, sure.
Okay, okay.
You should try it in my office.
So, let's be clear, we all have shown what we're doing.
I'm calling a point of order. Point of order. Much for our this meeting, please.
Thank you.
I want to look at me.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of comments. First comment is that next week, Wednesday, I have a budget finance committee meeting here, seven o'clock. My second comment is that trustee Brewer, regards to this, your proposal, can you just come next week while we discuss it with your, I guess, how, your recommendations of how we're going to come up with a hundred thousand dollars to do the audit if we decide to go take that, take that route? Because I mean, that's a substantial amount of money. And then also, Mr. Mayor, a comment for you. Last week, we didn't get the chance to hear from a previous financial director on the budget recitals. Is it possible that next committee meeting, we can have the treasurer come in and give us, he probably won't go with exact details, or maybe he will, but can, can him, he can come in next week and kind of explain to us what's going on at the end of November? And then we can expect December to be closed as well.
Okay. The budget, the actuals, I mean, you wanted to come into committee meeting to do that?
Yeah, but that wasn't supposed to happen last committee meeting with the director, I mean, aside man, she, she wasn't here. So he can just come next week and kind of explain that. And then I'm pretty sure that gives a better example of where we stand, at least as of November. I'm pretty sure that'll help out with where the money is according to this. And that's all I have.
How's the governmental relations, trustee season Tate? Ordinance review committee, trustee Lutzach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Board. Ordinance review is not met because we've had no ordinances to go over. So once we get some ordinances to go over, then we'll have a meeting. So I'm hoping that we have something in March that we've talked about, Mr. Mayor. So I will announce how much we're going to have the meeting once I get an ordinance.
Let me set them, write that down. Yes, you have to do that.
I'm going to call and leave a message for you, so that we know. Because I'm sure we're going to have one for next month, but we do not meet when we don't have ordinances, so hopefully we'll have something in March. I've got to ask you.
Thank you. Public Safety Committee, trustee Bessel-Potts.
I just wanted to thank those who joined us last week. We had a nice turnout. So thank you to the guests who joined us. And, Cora, I just, I, I lost track of where I was at with your, your stuff as you were going through all your, your different parts of your report. You were talking about your meeting on the fourteenth, as in two days from now?
Correct.
Okay, and you said that was at what, two o'clock with Kevin?
Two o'clock.
Okay.
And the person that's on the table.
Okay, thank you. And that was all I, thank you.
Okay. Trustee Carter.
Mr. Mayor, this is kind of my head.
Reports of committees and commissions, senior advisory council, Mr. Coleman, vice president for Mr. Emmett Farmer Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Board members, the report is as follows. Our next meeting for the senior advisory council is Thursday, February 21st, all's well. Game night is every first and third Friday. Please come out and invite your seniors for games and other games. Third, also, our first senior luncheon, which was, which was scheduled for February 28th, 28th, has been canceled and will resume in March. And this concludes our report.
Thank you. Unfinished business. I entertain a motion of the villages of South Village, Will Cook County is authorizing the village to enter a designated boundary agreement with the village of Crete in accordance with ordinance eighteen, episode twenty-one. My motion.
Selecting.
It was moved by trustee Carter, second by trustee Zupan. Any questions?
Trustee Moran.
Yes.
Trustee Tate.
Yes.
Trustee Todd.
Yes.
Trustee Zupan.
Yes.
Trustee Brewer.
Yes.
Trustee Carter.
Yes.
Motion is carried. New business. I entertain a motion to approve accounts payable dated February 12th, 2019, in the amount of four hundred ninety-seven thousand, four hundred sixty-seven dollars and sixteen cents.
Mr. Mayor, that number's not updated.
Oh, I'm sorry. Divided. Four hundred ninety-nine thousand, sixty-seven dollars and sixteen cents.
So...
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
It was moved by trustee, Grant, second by trustee Carter. Any questions?
I have questions. This mayor, on page one, I would like a copy, and I don't know if you get it, that come down, of the invoices for Republic Service for, I guess, December of 2018. Who would I get a copy of that from? For fifty-six thousand, what was that? Two hundred seventeen thousand, seventy cents?
Correct.
Okay, and item number two, it says we have all these expenditures on here for, from Amazon for office supplies. I'd like copies of all those invoices. And also, we have something on there from Joe for seventy-five dollars that just said cash reimbursement, cash reimbursement for what? So I'd like to know what's that for about? Item number three, we have three professional service from Dr. Strutter for human resources and one is for two thousand forty dollars. That's outside of the norm, so why does she get a little bit extra? What is, what is that for?
You want me to answer these one by one?
Well, yeah.
Okay, back to the cash reimbursement for Amazon, those are office supplies. I mean, I can't tell you if they need a pen, piece of paper, but if we need it, we order it and we stay on top of it. But I'm sure there's receipts that we can get and get copies of. Obviously, there's an entry in there. As far as the extra money for Dr. Strutter, that's the week that we had the problem, so I had to have her stay over because at that time I needed to get more involved, I didn't know someone involved with the transition that we just told you about. So I asked her to stay there so we can get more, and I'll do as much as I possibly can with this, but it'll take for three days really, 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 right?
You skip a lot of cash reimbursement for Joe?
As I said before, I'm going to find out on that, on their, I don't know what they were. I can't tell you what, what they are, and I'll be lying if I could. So I can get the, get the receipts and find out.
Okay, also down here, number four, you have three additional expenditure, eight hundred and fifty dollars a piece for Dr. Strutter, and I'd like a copy of those invoices for those. Also, for the lab group, we have two additional, I'm sorry, it's three additional invoices. I'd like to see, see those. And one of them's for seventeen thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five dollars and seventy-three cents. I, I'd just like to know how much is, what is, what is that for? I'd like to take a look at those invoices for us, because we, you know, we have the families. I'd just like to know what they're being, you know, what we ask to be made.
Trustee, when did you get the accounts paid?
It doesn't matter when I got the accounts paid. I had an attorney from Olson Disturb today asking the same questions and she said she didn't have them. So, I guess, I'm just letting you know. I didn't have, this is, frankly, still haven't got any answers from them. Also, if we go to, we have a, a payment of, for the tip fund, for, tip for, for three thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five dollars and twenty-five cents. I'd like to know, I know it's for the tip, but I'd like to know specifically what is it for? You know, who authorized money to be taken out of tip to be paid for this tip fund? So with those, I'd like those things to be removed until we can take a look at them. My right as a trustee to ask, and so I'm putting it out there, because all these invoices here doesn't make any sense. We paid all this money and we don't even know what it's for.
Where did you see three hundred thousand dollars?
On page six, there's three thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five...
You said three hundred dollars.
On page six, there's three thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars and twenty-five cents for Kane McKenna. What is that for?
Obviously, professional services.
I understand it's professional service. I'd like to know details. Also, I'd like to know details on, on the lab group. What are we paying all this money for her? I'd like to know details on Dr. Strutter's. What are we paying money, monies for her? Also, I'd like to know what are they paying for all these office supplies? What did Joe buy for his, his money? And, you know, so on and so on. Yes, we get the invoices, but I'd like to see the details. I ask them to be removed.
Any other questions?
When, when can I get those invoices?
Any other questions?
When can I get the invoices? I'll give you this one.
Matter of course, please call me back.
Trustee Todd.
No.
Trustee Zupan.
Yes.
Trustee Brewer.
No.
Trustee Carter.
Yes.
Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Trustee Tate.
Yes.
Motion is carried. I entertain a motion for a resolution of the approvals from the, for under the Illinois Highway Code.
So do.
Second. Moved by trustee Zupan, second by trustee Carter. Any questions? Got a word?
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Tate?
Yes.
Motion is carried. I have seen an ordinance amended chapter six of the Alcoholics Beverage Establishment Code.
I have a question before we have a motion. Can I get that?
Yeah, that's important after the motion is done.
After the section.
Moved by trustee Carter, second by trustee Grant. Any questions?
Yes.
Okay.
I thought we were, I'm sorry, so last, last week when we discussed this, I was complaining about we didn't see the strike throughs and the underlines, and so we did get that copy. So thank you for that. But we didn't get a clean copy to go with what we're approving tonight, so I'm voting about the fact we don't have a clean copy now. And one of the things we did discuss was the fact that item number one was redundant with number three. So because of the fact that we don't have a clean copy, I don't know for sure that we're going to remove number one and be left with just on Sunday between twelve and twelve and all other days.
I think you wanted to eliminate three because it was redundant. You could have just put like number one, you could say Monday through Saturday, because the hours are the same.
Yeah.
So I...
Do you have this, do you have this line still?
Not all of it. No, it's not. And last week, trustee had asked to get rid of three because of, you're sticking this and then you go over here and say all other days, but you... and say all other days, but you, it's the same hour. So, I would say Monday through Saturday, eleven, or not eleven, I apologize, eight AM to two AM. You could get rid of number three. And just have one and two.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion, I think, um, I'll ask to have that, um, your motion, you made your motion in the second draw.
I will, Phil, sir.
And, um, it's for the state. Item number one, which is Friday through Saturday between eight and two AM. And then item number three, eight AM to two AM or all other day.
No, no, we can get rid of.
Right. You want to get rid of number three because it's like the...
Redundant to what?
What you can put, uh, number one you could put.
Number one only says Saturday.
I'm limiting through Saturday because those hours are the same. Eight AM, you could, you could eliminate three. It just included in one.
Also, I wish you wanted to rewrite and say Monday through Saturday.
Right.
Right, because the hours are the same.
Okay, Monday through Saturday, eight to, eight to two, correct? Okay. And then, um, and then Sunday will stay the same, Sunday between twelve and twelve midnight.
Right.
All right, what I'll do is, um, I'll have this, um, rewritten. You guys get a copy and then we'll go from there. We won't, we won't, we won't even have to change that. Yes. So, we'll get this rewritten and make sure that, that, what you said, and that's what, that's what you want. Monday through Saturday, eight to two, and Sunday, um... No, because it's saying that it's unlawful to sell alcohol except for twelve, okay, from twelve to twelve midnight, okay. All right, then everything else will take off, okay. I have that rewritten and, uh, get it out to board and we'll go from there, but right now we cannot vote on this. Item number three, I'm sorry, item D. I'll entertain a motion to, for the resolution to partner with CBAP, Chicago Metropolitan Hospital Planting in the event staff plant program. We talked about that and that would be the first that's gonna be working with us. Uh, no calls to the village, because if you have to put in there, that's the first that will be working with us and we have to have a resolution for that, as we talked about last week. So, we'll entertain a motion.
So do.
Second. Moved by trustee Zupan, second by trustee Carter, any questions?
Yes.
Okay.
Shouldn't that mode of understanding be attached as an exhibit?
You had it in last... Yeah, I was just curious to know though if it should be attached, because they said there are two other documents that would be able to, rather than to make all those copies again, I think it should be just the other day.
Okay, just curious, because there were little records that had some exhibits, that's fine.
Any other questions? I have a question. Second by trustee Carter.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Tate?
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Motion is carried. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moved by trustee, uh, Tate, second by trustee, uh, Grant. Any questions? All of...